Paving materials. Patriot Steel. Lawns by Murphy. Van Eaton ready mix. Oklahoma Cement Solutions. Shoe Vow Construction. Court and Maine. All right. Vance Brothers. And Blades Group, and that concludes the bid opening.
If they'd be tabulated in return.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's motion, second, court tabulation, return. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Consent, any individual consideration?
Consent, okay.
Five through thirteen, there's motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number fourteen, I'm assuming is District One, with Mr. Gash for coming on down.
Morning Commissioners, item number fourteen is a new lease on our downtown copier. The only thing different with this is the statewide contract number has changed. We were having issues with this copier jamming repeatedly, so the folks at RK Black are allowing us to have the same rate but at a different machine, so for that I'd ask approval.
Motion to approve one copier lease.
There's motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item fifteen.
Item number fifteen is the lease renewal for our yard copier. I'd ask for approval.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Gentlemen, District Two.
This is just our annual shine contract. You'll recall Brandy continues to do these on behalf of the program, and so there are no other questions. I'll move the item.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item seventeen.
Our annual agreement with Hera for our salt barn that we have located in their industrial park, I'll move the item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the big co-op now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's still on the side of it, right?
I think so.
Item eighteen.
Yes, Commissioners, this was an item that has been talked about some, have never apparently formalized a line state policy for the county for any former official, either as a judge or county, public defender or DA, or an employee that was killed in the line of duty, all of which we have had unfortunately in the time since I've been here with people of distinction service, and I think probably most notably I was at a court clerk's funeral a few, couple of years ago, and I was one of three people there. He had lived to be in his nineties, and I remember the priest saying he's outlived all the people who remember his remarkable service. And so this is something that we can offer to those, and if they choose, they can have it done. If they don't want to, certainly it's not required, and I would have, as you see in the resolution, it would involve the court administrator and the county manager to facilitate arrangements within conjunction with the presiding judge and the chairman of the county. So if there are no questions, I'll move the item.
Second.
There's no questions, there's motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you for taking that on. Uh, this is, yes, oh, I thought you said something, this is a specific agreement for COVEL between Edmund and Oklahoma County, and between, sorry, it's for Midwest Boulevard, and between COVEL and Danforth. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We had a resignation of Leslie Nessman on the Citizens Advisory Board, and to replace her, Mr. Curling Kearns has agreed to serve, so I'll make the motion to fill my seats with Curling Kearns.
Second.
There's motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and thanks to Mr. Kearns for serving.
No, I was just gonna say thanks to Mr. Kearns.
That's a fair.
Morning Commissioners, we're seeking approval of three standard contracts. If you'd like, I can take them individually, or I would entertain a motion for all three at one time.
Go for all three.
Go for all three, go ahead and describe them.
The first one is a commercial property evaluation, model valuation piece that we use from Timian and Associates, item twenty-one. Item twenty-two is also with Timian's Association, it's a license renewal for Parknos. Item twenty-three is a storage facility that we use for document storage at MidCon.
Okay.
Of all three.
Ooh, there's a motion and a second to approve items twenty-one through twenty-three, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is a renewal lease agreement with Jespy Clayton.
Morning Commissioners, this is a lease agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and OKC Investment for the court clerk, the county treasurer, and DA record storage. And this contract did increase over last year, and the amount is not to exceed four hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars.
Move the item.
There's a motion to approve and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, for the DA, it looks like we got a copier contract from RK Black on item twenty-five, twenty-six, it's also an RK Black. So let's take items twenty-five and twenty-six, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-seven was previously discussed in executive session, this is our approval. Is there a motion to approve six hundred dollar contract for a record retention?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Stacy. Item twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight, this is a bridge that we had found that had never been on inventory, it's about ten years old. It's on Santa Fe, pretty close to the Logan County line, so we had it inspected. This isn't our normal cycle, but we needed to pick it up. Score's pretty low, it's only got a suspicious rating of thirty-eight because it's got a lot of undermining of the box. There's some repairs that need to be done internally that your crews can do, but the report of conference is so ODOT can pick up the cost of the inspection.
Yep. This is in District Three, as you just heard, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-nine is a lease agreement between the BOCC and the Public Building Authority for the County Election Board location, forty-two oh one North Lincoln Boulevard. That annual sum is in the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-one cents for thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty square feet that they occupy in that location.
Move the item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item number thirty. Looks like a copier contract for item number thirty, and is there a motion to approve that? And is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item thirty-one. Did you push your second?
Man, I'd already hit the motion.
Okay. So item thirty-one is a possible action for an annual contract with McBride for drug and alcohol testing, this is the same one that we have every year, correct? Not to exceed ten thousand dollars, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number thirty-two is a similar contract with SSM, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty-three is with consolidated benefits, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, any questions? Saying none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile Bureau, item number thirty-four is a lease agreement between BOCC, is anybody here to speak about this? Seeing none, okay. Uh, this is the Oklahoma County Juvenile Bureau and Oklahoma Department of Human Services, this is to lease out approximately eighteen thousand square feet. Keith, remind me, is this the fourth floor? At any rate, this is nine dollars and seventy cents per square foot, counting received fifteen thousand dollars, one hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-two cents per month. So there's a motion and
Second.
A second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item number thirty-five, this is Juvenile Bureau in Zepu, which is barber services for the juvenile detention center. There's a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number thirty-six, this is the agreement services between Oklahoma County and Oklahoma County Juvenile Bureau for our PhD. For psychological evaluations, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number thirty-seven is Juvenile Bureau in Oklahoma County for fingerprinting services, not to exceed five thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, item number thirty-eight is Juvenile Bureau of Oklahoma County and State Office of Juvenile Affairs for detention and transportation. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
There's motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item thirty-nine. Juvenile Bureau and Board of Regents of University of Oklahoma, Health Sciences, Child Abuse and Neglect, who will also provide psychological treatment and consultation for adolescent sex offenders. Item not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's an item, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number forty is a someone with turnkey health for psychological evaluation, not to exceed five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item forty-one. This is for prison ministries with Juvenile Bureau, not to exceed thirty-six hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Right.
Aye. Item number forty-two is also Juvenile Bureau Waste Connections for Solid Waste Trash Pickup, not to exceed seventeen thousand nine hundred twenty-eight, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number forty-three. Uh, justice benefits limited for professional services to explore opportunities with federal financial participation, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second and a second, to all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I wish they were here so we could have taken these one by one, saying they're just renewals. Item number forty-four, Juvenile Bureau and Franco Tipp Hostalia for mailing solutions for the rental of Vision S5 semi-automatic mailing machine, uh, not to looks like it's not to exceed two eighty-five thirty-nine from Bureau and five thirty oh one from detention, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, for that, item forty-five. Dane, I know you're in the room, come on down.
Uh, good morning, this one is for air technologies, this is the blanket for the quarterly maintenance we do on the Leibert Air Conditioning Minutes.
Is there, are these all standard renewals?
Yeah, they're all renewed, yeah, they're all.
You wanna explain all three so we can?
I can, but the next one I believe is for random repairs that come up, we do this way, we don't go into any improper purchases by blanket.
Okay.
Or anything that random, it's not part of the quarterly maintenance. Uh, forty-seven, I'm not even sure, what is forty-seven?
It says ISG Technology.
Oh, that's the master agreement, yes. Uh, this is something that they sent to us. Uh, apparently something that they've wanted from us for a year, but just never sent it over, it's just an agreement so we can do business with them.
Okay.
So, we just need a signature.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion that I approve items forty-five through forty-seven and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you, Dane. Planning Commission, Oklahoma County's REAP project located within Luther, the funding was utilized to assist sidewalks that is complete, correct? Thank you, uh, that has been a long arduous process just for a sidewalk, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Treasurer, Christie. He's gonna make Mark work? He honors you and then makes you work on the same day? Gee, thanks, Butch.
Okay, these are our annual resolutions to bring to the Board of County Commissioners for approval for our investment policies. Item number forty-nine is just designates it the American Rescue Funds money by the direction of the Board of County Commissioners, those monies go to the general fund.
You wanna go through them all?
Yeah, go ahead and go through them all.
Okay. Number fifty is our logbook service, we use it at BOK, we've done that annually every year, it works very well. Number fifty-one is just a resolution approving the use of overnight repurchase agreements with US government securities, that way every penny we got is making money for us. Um, item number fifty-two is just in the cashier's cage, designates the amount of funds in the cashier's cash boxes. Item fifty-three is our resolution for the investment policy for our general fund and all our funds under the BOCC. Item fifty-four is the defined benefit investment policy approval. Item fifty-five is resolution, oh, okay, this is item fifty-five is who designated, designates the prime signers for all the accounts, funds, CDs, uh, all the transactions, it's obviously gonna be Treasurer Butch Freeman, Chief Deputy Christie, President Lloyd Miller, and my name won't be on there, Stacy Rogers, Chief of Investments can be on there, and then Patricia Scott, as she's done honorably for many years, is Deputy Com- uh, Com- Assistant Deputy Comptroller, so, um, they're investment supervisors, I should have brought my readers, but anyhow, those are the people that will be able to conduct county business. Item fifty-six is again, that's part of the sweep process.
Yeah.
So, item fifty-seven, resolution designating all of the depositories, all the banks that we do business with, we don't do business with stolen, but we try to list everybody, we're open for competitive bids anytime we have the opportunity, and that's it.
Okay.
I'll move all those items.
That's second.
There's a motion and a second to approve items forty-nine through fifty-seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Masterful job, once again.
Thank you.
How many more of those are you gonna do for you? You coming back next week to do that again? All right. Commissioners comments, Commissioner Lo.
Yes, I do have a comment, and I'd like to welcome our new intern, myself, could you come up to the podium? Wanna embarrass you? Um, she's our new intern, she'll be working with Oklahoma County District One. She is a twenty-year-old engineering student at the Colorado School of Mines, which is one of the best engineering schools in the nation. Uh, she lives in Edmund, Oklahoma, and is a graduate of Moore High School. She will split her time with District One and also with Stacy Trumbo, uh, so she's gonna work with him and learn all of his, uh, I'll take all of his knowledge and, uh, and move forward with that, do you have a couple of words?
I just wanna say thank you.
Okay, well, welcome.
Welcome. Commissioner.
It's an exciting day, uh, the Fairgrounds Arena dedication here at ten thirty, and that will continue to maintain us as the horse capital of the world, or at least the United States here in Oklahoma County. It's a big economic, uh, engine for us here, it produces an untold amount of contributions to our economy, and, um, it's nice to see a construction project that went just like it was basically supposed to, so it's always one for the books when you can see that, so congratulations to the fair for doing that, and I'm, I think it's something we can all be proud of, and everybody's invited to the ribbon cutting at ten thirty in a few minutes.
Um, great. Uh, Oklahoma lost a monumental individual, a transcendent individual this last night. Uh, Mr. Gary England passed away, so the person that keeps us safe and basically invented all the technologies that we sit and stare at on a daily basis in David Barnes' office lately, uh, has passed and moved on away from us, so really our thoughts and prayers are with him, and first time I met him was actually with Mr. Ramon on one of the crazy snowstorms that we had going, so.
He was always very helpful to us in my
Yep.
first couple of terms when he was still working, he gave us great guidance about how to start responding with our crews.
Absolutely, great man. Item fifty-nine through sixty were executive session, item sixty-one is a disclaimer subject to any unpaid back taxes. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item sixty-two, just, we did the approval of six hundred, so we don't need any action on sixty-two, so no action on sixty-two, citizen participation, I don't have anybody signed up. Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, go ahead.
Also wanted to give a shout out to our Cleveland County Commissioner friends, Rusty and Rusty. So, appreciate their longtime friendship.
What are we doing down there? Well, anyway, is there a motion to adjourn?
Always.
There's a motion, see no objection, that'll be the order, we stand adjourned. All right, stay tuned for the Public Buildings Authority meeting.
Good to see you, Rusty. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah, sounds good. Yeah, okay, I will, yeah, okay. How do I get in? I'm not able to do an agenda.
Pretty quick, but I don't know, we got that executive session, so. Okay.
Yeah, I'm in.
All right, seeing as, of course, right when I do this, we'll call this meeting, the order roll call. Uh, notice that the meeting was properly posted June tenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, real quick, is there a motion to approve minutes?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and for this, we are going to kick straight to executive session, is there a motion to recess into executive session?
I'll move.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, we stand in recess. All right, we stand in recess. Is there a motion to return from executive session?
Motion to return.
There's a motion, is there a second? All in favor. Item number two. Item number two is claims, is there a motion to approve claims? There's a motion and a second, all in favor.
Item number three.
Keep it quick, Keith. Keep it quick.
Uh, item three is a lease uh agreement between the PBA and ACOG for the location forty-two, five North Lincoln. They lease seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-four square feet.
Any questions?
Annual rent is two hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents.
Move the item. Motion and a second to approve, all in favor.
Item four is a uh pay application for the ICB remodel project lingo construction. In the amount of three hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-one cents.
Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor.
Item five is a, an ancillary room that is uh leased by ACOG. That uh, that same location, it's only four hundred and fifty square feet, um, but it's, is separated here. Separate location.
Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second to approve, all in favor. Number six is the nine-one-one, uh, at ACOG, is there a motion to approve? There's a motion and a second, all in favor. Number seven is also with PBA and Oklahoma County Board of County Commissioners for the election board space forty-two oh one, is there a motion to approve? There's a motion and a second, all in favor. Item number eight, uh, this is a payment authorization for PBA funds for force seventy-seven fifty-nine sixty-eight to SuperRoof. This is for the Social Services Building, is there a motion to approve? All in a second? And a second, all in favor. Item number nine is uh regarding payment authorization of PBA funds in amount of four thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. GH two for courtroom, JJC courtroom remodel project, any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve and a second, all in favor. Item number ten is also uh with SuperRoof uh for PBA roof replacement at seventy-four oh one northeast twenty-third. This is a change order necessary to remove replaced damaged steel decking for sixteen thousand, seven seventy-seven nine. Uh, this uh will increase the overall to nine hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars and nineteen cents. There's a motion and a second, all in favor. Gentlemen, item number eleven. This is a change order number two to the uh services for SuperRoof at PBA at seventy-four oh one. This is to provide insulation, remove more uh damaged steel decking in the amount of fifty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents. This will increase it to nine hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents, is there a motion to approve? There's a motion and a second, all in favor. Uh, item number twelve is cash fund appropriation for PBA, this is in the amount of four hundred thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and fifty cents, is there a motion to approve? There's a motion and a second, all in favor. Uh, item number thirteen is the Metro Report of Fees, any questions? There's a motion and a second to move the fees, all in favor. Item number fourteen is uh PBA report of fees, is there a motion to? There's a motion to approve the report, all in favor and a second. Sorry about that, gentlemen, item number fifteen is our agreement for services between Miller Architects and PBA Authority for additional scope. Due to foundation redesign or, yeah, redesign, uh, this is nine thousand, six hundred dollars and no cents contingent upon encumbrance of funds. There's a motion and a second, all in favor. Thank you Keith, item number sixteen is to go into executive session. Item number seventeen, same thing, item. Yeah, that's what I'm sitting here confused about, so item, let's do item nineteen, is there a motion to proceed as discussed? There's a motion and a second, all those in favor. Any citizen's participation, seeing none, any commissioner comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion to adjourn, we stand adjourned. I tried. He was, you were moving a little slow.